Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, thank you for coming this evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, who never change, just as for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There's no changes. I just want to point out that we have a special meeting running concurrent that has one consent calendar item listed as five point one. If you'd like to combine the agendas and make it five point eleven.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Please.
Councilman Vosberg.
Aye.
Councilman Schindler.
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock. Mayor Protim Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor Horn.
And I vote aye.
Okay, we've got item number two, awards, presentations, appointments, or proclamations. Uh, tonight we have three different items. Our first one is the proclamation of the National Public Works Week 2024. If I can have Eric. Eric, go ahead and bring your two employees with you too. Okay, proclamation by the mayor of the city of Kalinga, National Public Works Week. Whereas the public works department provides services for our community and are vital and integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of the community is vital to the efficient operation of public work system and programs such as water, sewers, streets, fleet maintenance, building maintenance, wastewater treatment, solid waste collection, and airport operations. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas efficiency and effectiveness of the qualified and skilled staff contribute to the quality of life that residents and visitors alike enjoy and rely upon from the city of Kalinga. Now therefore, by the mayor and the city council that we recognize and extended appreciation to our dedicated and skilled staff and hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth 2024 as National Public Works Week, advancing quality of life for all. And be it further proclaimed that the city council requests that all citizens and civic organizations acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work services to our community and recognize the contributions which our public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kalinga to be affixed sixteenth day of May 2024. Congratulations. Okay, our next item is, uh, item number two, certificate of recognition, Westlands Water District 2024 Westlands, or Westside Scholarship Recipients. Do we have a representative here tonight?
Uh, they're not here, but instead of, um, removing this item, maybe if we can just agree to add it at the end of the consent calendar in case they come between now and then.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, we'll move on to our next one, presentation of fiscal, or fiscal year 2022, 2023, audited financial statements by the city auditor.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I'm here to give up some brief comments on the audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirty, 2023, and then I can take any specific questions you have. Um, just beyond the table of contents is the independent auditor's report. Uh, once again, we issued an unqualified opinion, meaning we found the city's books and records to be in, in compliance and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, so it's a, an, a clean audit opinion for the city for the fiscal year June thirty, 2023. Uh, getting into the financial statements, I'll just highlight, um, the general fund on page eight had a net increase in fund balance of just under one point three million, uh, bringing the ending fund balance for the general fund to, uh, just above seventeen point four million. The other funds, uh, major funds there are operating as intended. Um, so the city's got a, a, a healthy general fund at the, at the current point. Also like to just comment on the enterprise funds. Um, these are funds that operate off of user charges. And, uh, just want to note that the sanitation fund had a net decrease of a hundred and sixty-three thousand in its net position this year, bringing its overall, uh, net position balance to negative two hundred and fourteen thousand. So just want to keep an eye on that, uh, fund and make sure that the, the charges are in line with the, the operating expenses to operate that fund. Um, other than that, the other enterprise funds are operating as intended. Then getting into the actual, uh, footnotes of the, of the financial statements, these give a more detailed explanation of the significant asset and liability accounts. Um, there's extensive information here giving you more detailed information on all those significant assets and liabilities. Uh, there were no new Gatsby pronouncements this year, so new, no, no new footnotes or implementations um, that are reflected in this year's audit report. Um, going to page, um, thirty-seven, the city continues to meet its debt obligations and is in compliance with its debt covenants. Um, also, we have a detailed footnote in here regarding the city's pension, um, obligation and the different factors that go into that actuarial study each year, that kind of, um, increase or decrease that liability, um, depending on the discount rate, life expectancy, and different factors that are used to, to come up with that, that, uh, actuarial amount. Following the footnotes to the financial statements, we get into some budgetary comparison schedules. Um, gives you, gives you an idea of overall from budgeted amounts, final budget amounts to actual amounts, how the, how the major funds did in those categories. Um, overall, the city, as I mentioned, had a one point three million dollar increase, and the final budget was a overall decrease of two point two million, so a combination of timing of grant income was a big, that was about two million, so that was, um, that's always a little bit hard to budget because of the timing of the expenditures and when those grants are realized. And then, uh, public safety was budgeted at ten point five million and came in at eight point eight million of expenditures. Um, beyond that, we get into the non-major funds. These are, um, funds that don't meet the criteria based on the size of the assets and revenue, but, uh, all of these funds are also operating as intended. Uh, nothing to highlight with those. Um, then as we get towards the end of the audit report, there's another audit opinion on internal controls of the city. This is where we look at the, um, look for proper segregation of duties and the significant, significant transaction classes. Uh, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were identified. And then this year, the city, uh, had again another single audit. Uh, this is when the city expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal funds, federal grant funds. And so we did a more detailed audit of the major program, um, for the, uh, the, um, US Department of Transportation grant. And there were no findings related to the, the way that grant was operated, so another clean opinion, um, regarding the single audit. And then lastly, there's a management report, which is our communication to you, letting you know that we didn't have any difficulties in completing the audit. Uh, we didn't have any disagreements with management, um, didn't identify any uncorrected misstatements, and didn't have to consult with any other outside independent accountants. Uh, so I'm happy to, once again, report on a clean audit for the city. Um, city's now, um, current on their audits will be coming up upon another fiscal year in here, and we intend to get started on that in the fall and, and get this to you a little bit timelier, um, next year, so. I just want to thank Mai and her team and Marissa and the city for the opportunity to work with the city again and for all their hard work in getting this done. I can now take any questions you have.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Have a question. So, um, you were talking about the retirement, uh, funds.
Yeah.
That we have. Are there any significant notes on that that you could, uh, explain?
Yep. If you go to page, if you've got the audit report there. Um, starting on page forty-two, um, you'll see that, you know, the, the city's got two plans, the Pepper and the classic. Um, so you've got some different, on page four, sorry, on page forty-three, um, the different, uh, contribution rates, um, between the pepper and the miscellaneous. And also, that's for the, the classic, or the, the city employees, and then safety, public safety has its own. Um, there's also, the, the main factor that I would point to that kind of determines, if you look at page forty-four right now, they're using a discount rate of six point nine percent. Um, you can kind of see what a, what kind of difference it makes in overall liability versus if, if they increase that to seven nine, seven point nine percent or decrease it to five point nine percent. Um, so that, that's one of the major factors. Um, you also, if you look at, um.
And what exactly does that mean?
That's the rate of return of like what they expect to get for the investments and just the way the state, um, invest their, their, the funds that they're holding in trust for the city. So if you decrease, if they didn't get, if it went down to five point nine percent, you can see the liability goes to almost four point five million, whereas right now we're about one point nine million.
One point nine million?
Yeah.
That's where.
Is the liability, yeah.
The liability?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the number I've been looking for.
Oh, okay.
I've been looking for this number for almost a year. And so I appreciate you, uh, so.
Page forty-four there.
Okay.
Um, so that's just one of the major factors, then.
And how does that compare to other cities of our size?
Um, it's, it's, it's hard, I, I, it's hard for me to say. Um, it's not, uh, you're, I mean, it's definitely reasonable. Some cities have started to pre-fund it, so you can set up like a trust and you can put money aside, um, and that could reduce your liability. But this is such a moving target, most of the cities are just accepting that it's gonna be a moving target, and there's gonna be years where the number goes up depending on overall investment returns, and other years it's gonna go down, so.
Are you aware of cowpers and their investments?
Uh, no, no, not, no.
I, I, if you did, if you did, were aware that I was gonna ask you, Chris, from what I understand, they're tanking in the hole. They invest on things on purpose that ain't doing well.
Doing well.
So, they have this whole idea that, uh, they should invest in greenhouse stuff, and Yeah. that's not stuff that sells.
Yeah.
And so, I just, is there like an overall, like, have we been doing better or worse throughout the years?
It doesn't, it, it doesn't, uh, you're pooled with the whole, um, with all the other public entities, so it's not like your specific, um.
Could you tell us what it was last year? Is that in here or not?
No, it's not. Or, or last year's liability?
Yeah.
Um. Yes, let's go to page, um.
And unfortunately, the word document that I'm looking at are the PDF. The pages don't directly line up with what you're looking at, so I apologize, but I'll do my best.
You're fine. Let's go to, um, let me find it here. Um, let's go to page fifty-three, if you've got that.
Yes, give me just a second to get there. Fifty-three, okay, perfect.
So this is kind of a running table, which will, we're at nine years of presentation here. It'll be ten years next year.
Oh, wow.
Um, but you could see for twenty twenty-three, the one point two million and the seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, that's our total liability for the current year. The year before, we actually had a net pension asset of, um, seven hundred thou, some, oh, just under eight hundred thousand.
Down with the market then?
It does, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And that will kind of, like, you can see you were, you know, you've been trending under a million, and now it's, you know, above that, but, you know, like I say, this is, this is one of those liabilities you're never gonna fully recognize because the city's not gonna close its door someday and just pay out, hopefully, you know, all its retirees, so.
And you wouldn't even want to because you can't unders, because there's such a fluctuation into here. Paying extra even may not even be a benefit, because who knows where the market's gonna go?
Yeah.
Could go either direction.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate it. Thanks. That's the only question I had.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? I did have one more question, babe. What about our accounts receivables?
Um, just kind of in what makes them up or in total?
Like, is, is our, is our accounts receivables, um, how much is it? And is that something that's within range of normal cities as well?
Yeah, we can go to page, um, four. Um, you can see, overall, for the governmental funds, it's only fifty-six thousand. Um, the, the enterprise funds are about one point five million, which is, you know, that's normal because you're billing for the services and the timing of those payments. Um, sometimes you'll have an intergovernmental or due from other governments, that's a receivable as well. You got probably about four point five million that's, um, was recognized, um, from grants, basically reimbursements, because you're always on a request for reimbursement, um, basis where you're spending the money first and then getting reimbursed. So that's a receivable. You've also got some interest receivable. Um, that's, that's more due to the, um, successor agency, one of your bonds, so that's not, that's a little bit of a, a wonky receivable, but that's, on this presentation, that's also recognized because it's from the successor agency, a payable from them.
So I guess what I was looking at, um, was our municipal, um, receivables, if that, it seems aye. I mean, but.
Are you looking at, you're talking about the, the enterprise funds?
Yeah.
Um, I probably couldn't tell you off, just off the top of my head if they were high, and I mean, look here at each fund. I mean, the wa, yeah, we'd have to look, you'd have to get a little more information on the aging. You know, you can then kind of see if, how much of that is potentially over ninety days, and, um, you know, I know the cities are a little more, you know, their hands have been tied a little bit more on what you can do to collect those, and there was also some COVID funds that were to alleviate some of the, um, pressure of residents not being able to make their utility payments, so. But that water fund is, yeah, eight hundred and nineteen thousand. I would say that's, that's, that's on the high side.
That's significant.
Yeah, yeah.
So. All right. Well, I appreciate you, uh, at least leading us to where we can see the numbers.
Yeah.
And understand them. Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions, counsel? Don, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No actions will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will refer to staff for follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by five PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. Do we have any citizens that would like to speak? Counsel? Nothing? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on. Okay, we have no, nothing for public hearings. Uh, we have eleven items tonight for the consent calendar. Uh, what would counsel like to do?
I'd like to pull item number, uh, five point four.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to pull item, um, five point nine and five point ten for explanations.
Same with five point five for explanation.
Okay, we'll move on to the first item, uh, five point four, Councilman Vosberg.
Yeah, I just want to, um, I guess I want to ask, wow. It's a major cost increase. No, that's a major cost increase. And, uh, you know, we've been trying to get this done for quite some time. But I'm gonna have to, like, agree with staff on this to reject all the bids. And so I just want to make sure that, uh, either we pull this off separate and we vote on not accepting the bids, because I don't want us to accidentally approve the consent calendar, which would include improving this item, uh, and I don't know how it sits or how it reads, so. I guess I just, uh, want to make sure that we've, if we, uh, how does this item read to you?
So the recommendation is to reject the bids, so if you approve this item on consent, then the bid will be rejected.
Okay, perfect. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
Move on to the next one, item number five point five, Councilman Ramirez.
I just wanted to see if we could get an explanation for the public, uh, about this funding.
Just one information on the project? Just one information on the project? Oh, okay. So, uh, every year, uh, there's money allocated through the SB one program, which I think we all remember when SB one was passed and kind of lieu of the gas tax, uh, that we receive annually. And so we have to identify projects, and then the state allocates funds, uh, that we have to approve by resolution, and then we proceed forward. Um, past projects like Cherry Lane, Sunset Avenue, we've done with, uh, this road rehab money. So for this project, um, we're looking at, uh, we've been kind of analyzing some of the, the infrastructure projects, and based on our pavement management program, were some road, roadways that are in need of pretty, uh, in disrepair that basically you're kind of going beyond just doing a slurry seal on these projects. So this would be Sacramento Street, uh, all the way to Wurthen, between, basically between Forest and Wurthen on Sacramento Street. Um, it'd basically be a full, full reconstruction with new concrete paving, uh, replacing the existing valley gutters. Um, and then also, we'll be looking at some utility improvements. Uh, there'll be some sidewalk improvements, and then there's also some sidewalk work that's going to be done in coordination with this project as part of that Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities grant. That's gonna be in that area as well, so that'll include some additional sidewalks, curb ramps, and that includes, if you guys recall, the additional lighting that's gonna go in that entire neighborhood, um, on Valley, Houston, Pleasant, all the way between Thompson and, uh, uh, that's what, Louisiana. So we've got tremendous amount of new lighting. Um, and to expedite that, we'll be doing the new solar lighting, uh, the solar lights in those areas, which we found to be very, uh, successful here in town. Uh, so with that, we're looking to start design immediately. Um, and then we'll probably be doing some, hopefully start construction if everything goes smoothly by next year. So. Be on the south side, yeah. So there's, it, it's part of the affordable house. Oh, Pleasant Street. So yes, so, so people are aware, uh, we went in and we did the sewer, we did the sewer, we did the, uh, water line replacement, uh, which was one of our water bond projects. And we discovered that during that construction, we found the sewer line was in really bad shape. And so we are currently in design. We're hoping to go out to bid in the next, probably a few weeks for the Pleasant Street sewer line project, and then once that project's complete, then we're gonna repave all of Pleasant Street. So I, I, I apologize for anybody in that area. We're trying to fix potholes and trying to stay up on it. I know the road's in bad shape, but when we recognize that, we, we felt that, you know, we were gonna move forward, replace the sewer, and then we'll repave the whole, the whole thing, so. It'll take a little bit of time. There'll be a little bit of headache through the process of the, the next project, but ultimately, it'll be a new paved road, uh, once it's all complete.
Is there any way we can send some kind of notification to everybody that lives on East Pleasant from one end to the other? of what the future plans for the street are going to happen?
We might be able to put together like a flyer.
I'm hearing complaints with the street being, it's completely beat up. You can't drive through it fast.
Yeah, it's, it's a little traffic down. Traffic calming measures, right?
Yeah.
Just to be like constant on the notice, because I know they, in that area, they have a lot of cars there.
Yeah, we do that.
Taking the whole thing.
And those lights, are those going to be owned by the city?
Yes.
Yay.
Yeah, so we're, we, it's, it's a huge cost savings, which is going to allow us, which basically the project was only to Worthy Street, all the new lighting between Louisiana and Worthy on, on Valley, Houston, and Pleasant, and Sacramento. With the savings because of not having to worry about infrastructure costs, not having to worry about PG&E design, all the wiring and conduit, we're able to expand that project all the way out to Thompson. So basically, that whole area, south of Polk, north of Sacramento, will all have new lighting along that whole corridor, that whole neighborhood.
You know, I just want to make the comment that I, I've, I've heard from those people out there that they haven't seen the city out there in any good fashion since the earthquake. That's how long that, that has been since they believe that this has had any significant work. And a lot of those, the street itself is really rundown. So there was no going quick down that street ever that I could think of. But I'm just really happy, you know, it's my district. So this is something that we've been waiting for, for quite some time.
Yeah, it's about a three to four million dollar investment in that, kind of in that, in that district area. There's some on Cullings, on South Cullings Street, some other improvements there. But there's this tremendous amount of improvement going on in that neighborhood.
Well, and I know that we represent the city as a whole, but the people do try and go to their representatives a lot of the time. And I've heard nothing but complaints for a long time, especially when I walked that district. And when I told people you had plans for this, they didn't believe me. So I'm sure that now they see people out there doing stuff that might think, get them to think a little differently. So I appreciate that. I just want to say that, that's all, that's amazing.
How many districts are left for the road repairs and alleys?
All of them. We're putting together right now-
The ones that have already been done versus the ones that still haven't been done yet?
For alleys?
And some of the streets.
There's, I don't, I, I'm, actually, we're in the process of inventorying those. Because I know now that we have, we're, it's a little bit harder to get federal funding for alleys now. Because they, most of our alleys now that are left are previously paved alleys, where a lot of the alleys we were able to get with, with federal funding were unpaved alleys. Or they're such bad shape, they're pretty much dirt at that point. And so it's a little bit more challenging. But we are inventorying to kind of see where we have, where, where those alleys are and what alleys we still need to try and do some repairs on. Same thing with valley gutters we're trying to work on. So there's a lot of inventory we're doing to kind of see, and then it's just a matter of budgeting and trying to build large enough projects to be able to actually entice contractors to bid on, on work.
Do we have any issues with PG&E in the alleys, like we do on some of the streets, for being able to figure out who's responsible?
PG&E is not too much of an issue in the alleys, because everything's overhead in alleys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there too many alleys where, like apartments are, they, they own it or, you know?
No, mo, almost all the alleys are public. Yeah.
Like the Carmelo apartments, that alley is really...
I'd have to look, but I think most of the alleys, because they have utilities in them, they're mostly right away, they're city right away.
That alley between Terry Glen and the other apartments, that's the one I, I, I believe I mentioned to you before. We, nobody knew who owned it, if it was this, if it was the apartment complexes and the condos at the end, or if it was the cities, or if it was Terry Glen's.
I'd have to verify that one.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, item number five point nine, Councilman Schindler.
Yeah, I just, I like to hear what our police department's been doing around town, and I think everybody should, if you don't mind giving us a little...
Oh, we'll go, we'll go to ten, we'll go to coun, we'll go to ten, item ten.
Sorry about that.
I can, I can go over nine if you want me to. So our code enforcement officer does a monthly report where she keeps track of the most common violation notices that she sends out. This isn't all she sends out, but she just keeps track of the most common violations. So in the month of, I think this is March, yes, in the month of March, she sent out one hundred and sixteen violation notices. Common infractions were vehicles parked on the lawn, unpermitted businesses selling food, the improper storage of storage containers, shopping carts, semi trucks parked in residential areas, overgrown weeds, junk trash and debris in the yard, inoperable vehicles, and a broken fence. So that totaled one hundred and sixteen. There's thirty-one of those that are still pending, which means they likely requested an extension of time to get those violations corrected. Of the one hundred and sixteen, twelve did not comply and received citations, and seventy-six of them have been remedied already.
Thank you.
And I like to say that I've been in there in her office, and she's always working on these citations or these violations. And, you know, we're blessed that we have somebody like that that takes a lot of weight on her. But in the long run, our town looks beautiful, it's starting to look really good compared to other cities. And like I said, as a coach, that we go travel somewhere else, is their towns are looking terrible, terrible compared to us. They can't even touch us at all. So, you know, my, my, my handshake to her that she's doing a great job in keeping our city clean and up to date.
Yeah, and a note to the public, when, when you call, be nice to her. I, I keep going by her office and people are screaming. I'm like, this, you know, it's not even, it's, from what I understand, you know, she's handing out a fix-it ticket, correct? Like, if they've, you know, so please be nice to her.
Most of them are warnings at first, and then it's the habitials that refuse to do anything. Not all cases are they refusing, some they can't, they're unable to, which they're disabled or they're physically unable to do it. So I'm sure that, I'm sure she works with them on those.
She's really nice, public. Please be nice to her. She's doing a lot.
Okay. What would counsel like to do with the consent calendar?
We have ten still.
No, we've got ten.
Ten, oh, you want the police, you have the police department, too.
In the last council meeting, council requested information on the DOIs. And we did have fourteen so far year-to-date, and only two in the month of April. And we'll probably be having that checkpoint in the summer, I know, probably either July or August, working with CHP on that. Our stats so far, Part One crimes, as if you've seen that in the report, it's, we're just, it's great. We're currently at thirty percent reduction of crime year-to-date, and that is huge. That's twenty-seven less victims from last year. And a lot accountable, it has to do with the, the staffing, having the right staffing and officers being very proactive. Our response time varies weekly from four point eight to maybe a five point two minutes to responding to emergency calls. So that's, that's huge, and it has to do with having the right staffing. But the, currently, we're off to a good start this year with reduction of crime, and, and we're going to work hard and keep that going.
Thanks, chief.
And a note on that, like I've always said, that a lot of comments are always done with the, you know, towards the police station. And, oh, I, I see a unit cruising up and down. I'd rather see them cruising up and down. That means that they have done their job, and they're fighting the crime. And that's the whole point, and that's the whole point. You know, I didn't get to congratulate you guys on that, that speed chase, the job, you know? In other towns, that would have just, it would have been, you know, and I'm sure the town is seeing now that, hey, we're not going to take that. So you try to get your stuff going over here, now we're going to take you out, so.
And I had a quick question, because I've been asked. Did the LPRs and the cameras have any play in any of these, like, for instance, that pursuit that you, that you're on, or any of the investigations that you're working on?
No, not on a specific case, other than you go back later, you see the vehicle going through the cameras and capturing it. But we were able to find the vehicle within short time at the gas station. So that's what we did help, so the sergeant will have their, and look at the vehicle, find it. But we are getting a lot of luck with the crimes that are occurring in the city. Yeah, we are getting, capturing, missing plates and information, especially those, we have a couple of cases that are from out of town coming in and committing crime illegally. So we definitely, it's good to have investigators, detectives working that. So we're going to be, hopefully have some success in the rest.
So they are helping them, they're aiding?
Oh, definitely.
Excellent, thank you.
One thing, one thing that, once again, I mentioned as a coach, the schools that come in, they, they, they feel really safe letting their kids out and go eat. So other schools that come into our town, they feel really safe. And we always get, you know, a good comment on that, like, hey, you know, your, your town just settled, right? I'm like, yeah, thanks for our chief, so.
We want it safe and quiet. There you go.
So I got a question for you, possibly Sean. In the last, well, you said you got so many, you got a few DOIs. What's, do you know the difference between the drug DOIs versus the alcohol DOIs? Is, is one more than the other now than what's normal?
I, I didn't break down the fourteen arrests, so I'm not sure. But I believe majority of them was alcohol, but there might be a few drugs.
All right, all right. Thank you. Okay, now, what would counsel like to do? I think we've gone through everything. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
With the changes, adding five point eleven.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Bosberg?
Aye.
Okay, our next item is, item number six, ordinance, presentation, discussion, potential action items. We have one tonight, fiscal year 2024, 2025, proposed budget discussion and direction.
Thank you. So you should have a hard copy of the budget as well as an electronic version in your email, so you can follow along with whatever you'd like. This version of the budget, which is still another draft, is reflective of the changes that we discussed in previous council meetings. The highlight of the general fund can be found on page six. So the budget as proposed for next fiscal year would balance to zero. You'll see the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget revenue as fourteen, just over fourteen million. And the expenses to match, those are both in the far right columns on page six. The main differences from the last version you saw is we have the health insurance rates now. So when we received our renewal, we received a thirteen point nine percent proposed increase from Blue Shield. That's just on our medical insurance. We also received increases for vision and dental insurance. And so our employees voted to change insurance carriers to Anthem next year, which is offering a decrease. So in the first few versions of the budget, I had included the increase. And that was about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand more that we would be paying next year in health insurance versus what we're currently paying. But based on the vote to change, we're actually going to have a savings of about forty-five thousand. Now, that's not just the city's portion that's made up of what the employees pay also. So what we did was, in making those changes, and then looking at year-to-date ambulance revenue for the current fiscal year, and it coming in higher than what we had anticipated, we were able to balance the budget in the general fund for next fiscal year. So we can go through it in detail or just answer questions, but those are the primary changes from the last time you saw it. There are a few changes that we still need to make before it's adopted. But they're going to be minor changes with some staffing. We had an employee who was a public utilities coordinator leave, and so we need to make some adjustments. And then some adjustments based on new assignments in the finance department for next year. But those will be very minor changes. And other than that, we feel that we have a solid budget to move forward with adopting in June.
Hey, there's, there's one thing I'd like to see changed on here, actually modified a little bit. And that is for the training, travel, and conference budget for each one of the districts. We've upped it all, and each one has an individual amount, but not everybody uses theirs up. So I'd like to get it where the city manager and the assistant city manager, depending on who's here, can authorize to pool funds from the unused amounts and use them towards the ones that need it. Instead of just putting everything into a big pot.
I'm fine with that. Yeah. And that was kind of, that was, my intent was to separate them out for tracking purposes and so that we would know. But they also, I did think I added the caveat that we would be able to, to take them out. And I think it, the idea at the time was that we would bring it back to council. But I have no problem making the change to where we just do it with city manager, assistant city manager approval. That makes more sense. That way it doesn't have to come all the way back to council. Because sometimes things come up like that, and you need to get access to it. So I have no problem with that at all. And I think that would be reflected in the code of conduct when we finally get that to come back. Is that, am I thinking correctly?
Yeah, it's scheduled to come back every January, so we could add that language. But there's nothing that mine needs to do differently. We'll just do a memo. So hypothetically, say like Roger had money left, and he wasn't going to use it, and you had a conference you wanted to go to. We'll just do an internal memo that says he's okay with you using the funds that you have.
So I, the way I set it up for the council code of conduct is we can pull it at any time during the year and modify it. So do you want to pull it and bring it back for future?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll do that as a future agenda. That's fine, yeah. And then I just, I had a quick question before we move on to the budget about, actually a question and a comment. You were able to get the city employees to change medical plans within a council meeting?
Yes.
That's pretty amazing. That shows dedication to the, this employees have to the city. That's amazing. That's really, that's really cool.
Yeah, so it, it's actually beneficial. We have a health insurance committee that's comprised of two members from each of the bargaining units. And so they are tasked with getting the information and taking it back to their bargaining units, and then getting a vote and submitting their vote to us. So they did a lot of the work, all we did was have a meeting and provide them with the information and what the numbers were. It benefits them as well, because if, they're paying a percentage for their family members. So they're going to save money by changing also.
Yeah, well, that's, I just want to comment that that's, that's a very creative, outside-the-box type of thinking at the last minute to try and figure out how to, you know, solve this, and I think that's pretty cool. Just want to thank everyone involved for that.
I got a quick question on that one. How long, how long has the city been with Blue Shield?
Off the top of my head, I would say maybe four or five years. We were with Anthem Blue Cross. And so there's this game that both carriers play where you'll, once we sign with Anthem Blue Cross, they're going to give us increases every year. And then Blue Shield is going to come in and say, we'll give you a decrease, and then we'll switch to Blue Shield. And then they'll give us increases every year. And then Anthem will come back and say, we'll give you a rate decrease. And that's just the game that they play. But if we don't change, then we just continue to be hit with increases. And granted, our increases are not as high as a lot of other cities, and our rates are not as high as a lot of other cities. But they are still expensive. Health insurance for employees is a major cost.
Thank you.
What was that, that increase that we were going to expect? How, what was the percentage increase?
Thirteen point nine percent, just on medical alone. And then... Dental was five, sorry, my mic's not on. So medical alone was thirteen point nine, dental was five point one. And vision was also five point one.
And a lot of these are what we would call uncontrolled costs. I mean, there's really no way besides switching to providers to control them.
Correct.
And that was a significant amount of money, too.
Correct.
Okay, do we have any questions on the, any other questions on the budget?
So our plan would be if council's okay, like I said, there are going to be a few minor changes based on staffing assignments. Because we have to allocate staff to the enterprise funds based on the duties that they have, so that we're not overcharging. So we're going to make a few modifications there, but our goal would be to bring the budget to the June council meeting for adoption.
So I just wanted to point out to everyone listening, I know that we don't hear a bunch of questions happening like right now, but this is what, the third or fourth? This is the- This is the fourth time that we've had to look over this, and I believe that everyone, including myself, has been also working internally to understand the budget so that, you know, we can, you know, not have a five-hour event. And so, I won't make it one. So, I just wanted to point that out. I appreciate it.
Any other, any other questions, council? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. City managers' announcements.
I have a few. So, I was asked for two future agenda items, and they will be on the June agenda as information only, but that June agenda, or that June meeting is going to be later in June because our first meeting would fall on High School Graduation Day. And so, I wanted to get the information out there. It'll still be on the agenda, but that way, you're not waiting as long. So, one of the things I was asked about was to see if we could work with the Parks and Rec District to get their restrooms open in the parks. I met with Mallory from the Parks and Rec District. She said that the Olson Park restrooms are open. They're open 6:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. They don't have weekend staff. They're not open on the weekends, and they don't keep them open at night. So, they're open 6:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. The Keck Park restrooms are currently closed because there's a major repair that they need to complete that's about $35,000. But they anticipate getting approval at the next meeting, and then, once that repair is done, those restrooms will be open. And then, the other item was, I did research the Golden Handshake with Calipers, and the city's not eligible for the program, but I'll have the explanation for that on the agenda for the June meeting.
Any council members have any announcements or reports?
Our high school mascot won. So, you know, just want to say thank you to the Valley, the State of California for voting for us. It was, it was a battle. And there were some, Gottfried's throne, their mayor, their mayor kind of blocked some individuals and vice versa. So, it got pretty, pretty rough. But thank you to, to staff that works in the radio station, individuals that are from Cullina that worked at the, you know, news station to help us get mascot of the champions of the nation. So, yeah, and can I do a future agenda? Other than that, thank you, thank you to staff, everybody, fire, police staff here. Mine, thank you for the budget. You know, thank you for all the staff, and you guys have been great. So, yeah, that's, that's it.
To go along with that on the mascot, Cullina had, for their mascot, we had roughly a million votes. And the other city, Oklahoma, I believe it was, had, is it Oklahoma or Florida, one of the two? They only had, they had just under, they had just under 400,000 votes. So, we beat them by more than double. So, and it went, it went up quick, even before the deadline, the last couple of days of the deadline, it kept shooting up even more. So, it was shooting up at almost 1,000 at a second. So, it was going up pretty quick, so. Okay, my other announcements are, be sure to come out next weekend. It's Derby. We have the parade. We have the carnival. We have a lot for everything. There's actually some new items for the little kids, the very little kids, 36 and under. So, keep an eye out for that as well, and some different rides. We have any future agenda items?
I got one. I'd like to bring in our high school mascot to present him with an award, if that's possible. And another one, maybe an agenda, if we could, I've been asked by a lot of the Latin Hispanic community if we could get some sort of translator, how they have at the high school, see, you know, to see how much it costs, because a lot of them are concerned, but they don't come in because everything is, you know, in English. So, they wanted to see if we could have like a prompter or something that, you know, I know in the high school, they have it as, as we're talking, it starts translating. So, maybe we could look into something like that and see what, what we can do.
Any others?
Yeah, I have one. You know what? I'm going to wait. I'll wait. I still need to talk to staff.
Yeah, I have an item I got to bring back, talk to staff first. But I think on some of the parking in the yards, I think while Next Gen is in their areas, is there any way we can give notification to code enforcement not to ticket people that are parking in their yards during that time, even though they're not supposed to park in the street?
No, you would have to change the code.
Okay.
For what?
I'll explain it later. This for the chief. Is there any way you can get a cost or see if there's availability yet for the test swabs for narcotics? Is there any way you can check and see if there's, if there's a cost, what that would be to actually get some for the officers besides the Narcan? Okay. Thank you. I believe that's it. We have one item for closed session. With that being said, we are going to adjourn the meeting until June 13th.